How does, yeah.
I still don't see your.
And Lee's, you are the one impacted, so I would welcome hearing from you as well.
What did Austin say? I can't, he's not at his desk.
I think, I think Eli might be Christina. On the attendees.
Oh, no, that's um.
Why would Eli be?
I think that's Eli, Eli.
Community court?
We should mess with a message.
As we wait for more folks to join us, I want to uplift that. I think for folks who don't come regularly or are late often or whatever, I think we need to set some, some boundaries on, on attendance. Because I, I, I take pride in like never missing a meeting and, and being present through, for every public meeting. I want, I want to have other folks that have that same level of commitment to be on the board and to lean into it, lean into the work. It's going to be, you know, it's all hands on deck. And so I, if we're gonna have, you know, a convening, you know, I want all of our members to be represented and, and present. And so I, this, this work is too important to just let, you know, government decide how we do it, or let like nonprofits decide how we do it. We need to show up as the community. So if somebody applies to be on the board, I personally expect them to be committed and present. And, and if they can't, then to provide, like to notify somebody. So that we, we know where people are at. It's just, it's too important to me to let, to see such attrition. Because where are we at right now? It's 2:11 and there's still, we don't have quorum yet, do we?
No, no.
This is Christina. The webinar link on the website does not work. I want to repeat, it does not work. I've had four people text me saying it doesn't work and I waited for 10 minutes before I got messages from Catherine and Alex and Ruby. I was not being in and I was in that wait area for at least 10 minutes before this started and the webinar did not start. So how many people are, were waiting like I was waiting?
Let's confirm. I'm gonna pull it up to make sure if it's working. There are, if we're in a practice session, it does have the waiting for the webinar. So let me, I'm gonna check it as well from my end to in, and if we need to get it updated, we'll make sure it gets updated.
And also Christina, I send your personal attend, or panelist links to, to both of your emails. So if you're having a hard time joining, I, I suggest uh, going to that link rather than the link on the website because that's not for board members. But I will work, because then you can just join in automatically as a panelist instead of being waited to be promoted.
Got it. I understand. And I did not know it was, we were waiting in however you said, what that wording somebody said, but um, yeah, cuz I figured once that two o'clock hit, that it automatically went live. I didn't know we stayed waiting until we had a quorum. I did not realize that was a practice.
And I did get on, I used the link and I was able to get on and I had someone else confirm that the link on the website was working.
I just did.
I appreciate you lifting that up, Christina, cuz there have been instances where it hasn't been working.
It is working?
Yes.
I just did it too.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, we still have, we still have seven, no, sorry, six members. So.
So. What I will propose that we do.
Yeah.
Uh, so we're, we'll go through the presentation and review the nominees. Um, and I have kind of two proposals for if we don't meet quorum at this moment, we can either look at doing um, a what day of the week, a Tuesday vote, just to have everyone come on and do the vote to affirm the nominees. Or at the convening, in the morning, have the board vote and affirm before the vote for the membership occurs. Uh, so I wanna put those two options forward. And thoughts, responses to those two options, should we not get others to join this, this afternoon?
Uh. I'm interested to hear other people's, but I'm, I'm thinking maybe, yeah, it's sounding like a Tuesday thing might be. I don't know.
It would probably be like 10 minutes where we'd get it posted, folks would join and we would just do the vote cuz we'll try and do the um, still the review, all the members have the materials, um, so we could do a quick overview and then the vote.
Patricia's got her hand up?
Yeah.
Yeah. Comment, my comment is that I am leaning agreeing with you. Alex, is that Alex who's talked, who just brought those suggestions up? Kelsey, okay. Anyway, it's like 2:15 time is far spent. I feel this is very important and that reviewing what we can do today and then coming back where we're all together, maybe on Tuesday, would be a, a choice because we need to get through the applications and review them and talk about them and have that, you know, time and not feel rushed.
Right. Um, well, why don't we walk through the selection process? So what the selection committee um, did, how applications were reviewed, um, and then we will, we'll see what there is. And Marvin, you're on mute still, sir.
Oh, wow.
I saw, I was there. We go again. I couldn't find my raise hand button and I couldn't find my unmute button. Uh, really quickly, uh, every time I tried to open the uh, let me make sure I'm, uh, the C O C selection committee. Uh, is that the process review?
Yes.
I get this.
Oh, whoa. Sorry, guys.
Well, that's what I'm gonna share right now, so we can, we'll walk through it.
Okay, I, okay.
And I'll re, I'll resend. It sounds like there was an error in the materials. It might, it might have been that they downloaded funny cuz, yeah.
Can you see if other people were able to?
Yeah, were other people able to open the materials? Were there other issues with the PDFs?
Patricia, yes, I have issues and you rescind everything and I'm just checking some still aren't coming through. I cannot, um, where it says preview, the screen is blank. On some.
I, um, I didn't actually check, um, just for transparency, but I did want to say that there's a Q and A question.
Okay, Q and A. Just now, let's be able to run through the programs.
I don't know why the chat would be disabled. We get the chat through the Q and A process.
The chat says to everyone. It should be.
And we will look into on the settings.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Everyone, thank you. Right, cuz it says everyone, not who's.
Let's do the presentation, share the screen for the presentation.
Share screen. Screen.
Are you able to see my slides?
Yes.
Yes.
Let's go. Um, I'm just gonna ask, I'm gonna present my screen, but if someone could flag if there is a question in the chat or the Q and A, that would be appreciated.
Bye, chat.
And let's go.
Thank you. All right, so we are reviewing the C O C board seating process and recommendations from the selection committee. Uh, I wanna just clarify, I was not on the selection committee. I am just presenting the materials from the selection committee. Um, as I helped facilitate and develop materials along with, uh, review from the co-chairs. Uh, just wanna make sure that is clear and transparent. Next slide. Um, so I first wanna cover a little bit about the role of the selection committee, the tasks that they completed and some of the onboarding process um, of that committee. Uh, we'll then talk about the selection process, so how they reviewed applications. Uh, and then the final recommendations and we'll have, we'll see if we have some space today for questions and discussion. And if not, we'll hold that for a next session, either Tuesday, um, or Wednesday. So the selection committee was a time limited ad hoc committee to develop recommendations for new board members and to continuum of care board.
Do we, sorry, does anybody else see the slides? Cuz I don't see the slides right now, just FYI. I saw them for a second, they went away.
I still see them.
You do? Okay, so it must be me. Weird. Sorry to interrupt. Go ahead, Kelsey.
Thanks, Ruby. That's an important detail.
I can send them out at the end of this meeting as well.
Um, so this comprised of, uh, members of the continuum of care, uh, folks with lived experience, C O C board members, pardon my typo, and K C R H A staff. So we had a mix of individuals on our selection committee. Next. So all of the committee reviewed and scored applicants to identify a top slate of candidates for confirmation interviews. These were phone interviews. All applications were redacted, so names and other identifying markers were not on the applications. Um, this was done to mitigate any potential bias, um, from board members.
Here's. Oh.
Yeah. Uh. Screen. So people participated in interviews in order to finalize the slate. You okay?
It says it's just sharing my home screen.
Well, it says you're reviewing.
How did it stop? How did it switch screens?
Oh, pardon, something happened with the sharing settings.
Are you all able to see it now?
Yes, now I can see it. Thank you.
Oh, so sorry, everyone was just seeing my, I will stop trying to take notes.
Uh, we can go back a slide, please. Yes, thank you. Perfect. So they reviewed the applications, the written applications blind. From there, they rated the applications based on a set of criteria that we will also review today. Um, the selection committee then did interviews with each of the other candidates uh, and rated those interviews based on another set of criteria. Um. Once we do the affirmation of recommendations, um, all of the candidates will be welcomed to present um, a little bit about themselves at the convening, um, provided the time today. Um, we won't have time to hear from the candidates. They were welcome to join this meeting to kind of hear and be a part of the process and have transparency into this process as well. Uh, and then we will set aside time for each nominee to share their kind of, a little bit about themselves and motivation for being on the board at the C O C convening on the 29th. So this is just a little timeline review of the process. So applications, written applications were reviewed by the selection committee, uh, between May 6th and May 8th. Um.
Oh, my gosh. So sorry.
Go ahead.
Just it. Um. We had a meeting on May 8th with the selection committee, uh, to review all of the candidate applications and scores. Folks could share notes and rating reasons and recommendations. From there, we set the, the number of candidates. We went from 20 candidates to 10 candidates for phone interviews. Uh, phone interviews were done between May 8th and May 16th, um, and those were also rated. We had a final recommendation meeting with the selection committee on May 16th to review the candidates to move forward for recommendation, uh, for C O C board member nomination. Uh, those recommendations were meant to go out via email on the 17th. Next slide, please. So a little of the onboarding. So to prepare the selection committee to review applications, uh, we did an overview of the C O C and the C O C board, the responsibilities and purpose. Uh, a review of equity principles, which included an implicit bias training. And then we reviewed the C O C charter for representation requirements for the C O C board. Next slide, please. Uh, this is a little overview of the application questions as well as the rating criteria. It was a one to five rating scale. Um, the application areas were understanding and interest regarding the C O C. Questions one and two on the application spoke to that. Skills and leadership, these were questions three and five on the application. Understanding of systemic racism, which was question six. All of which were scored on a one to five, one being there was not any information that was really shared. Five being for all categories, like it was super clear, um, and provided really concrete examples or concrete knowledge or I, uh, reasoning and understanding of, of kind of folks' motivations and what they're bringing to the table. Next slide, please. Uh, we also had an application question around the theory of change and then an overall application rating. Uh. So again, these are all on a rate, uh, ranking of one through five. Next slide. Uh, this is just a view of the matrix we use to score. Um, each person was identified as candidate either one, two, three, four, et cetera. Um, and then it was reviewer one and two. We had two people review every application and a part of every phone interview. Um, to ensure that there were multiple points of view that were brought to the review of each application and phone interview. Um, the reviewer identities and candidate identities were not initially shared with the others, other members of the selection committee to ensure as much kind of just clean slate as possible in reviewing applications. Uh, oh, the other piece, uh, folks had to have at least 35 out of a, of 50 points from the application to move forward to the phone interviews. Um, that was a 70, kind of 70% of, of points. Uh, to move forward to the phone interview. Uh, the phone interview again was done on a one through five rating and there were two members of the selection committee for each phone interview. Uh, phone interviews looked at collaboration and teamwork, housing and homelessness knowledge, increasing equity. Uh, and then an overall review interview rating, um, again, a one to five scale, uh, for each of these. Uh, and they were again, rated on a selection on the next slide. So this is again, the scoring matrix for the interview. Um, to move forward for recommendation, folks had to have a 30 out of 40 points, um, which was a 75%. Uh, we wanted to have the percentage of points, um, closely matched, so we had a, a objective way to determine who to move forward for recommendations. Um, to develop the final recommendation, some of the things that the selection committee used to again, develop review process, the theory of change, the C O C charter, and then application scores. Uh, in the charter, it does list a maximum of 19 members. Um, so having to take a consideration of how many people applied, how many available seats are there? Um, and how many people are we able to move forward? Uh. It, to not go over that 19. Uh, we also looked at representation and reflection of diversity of folks experiencing homelessness. Uh, I believe every single person who applied minus maybe one or two, um, do come with lived experience of homelessness. Um, and come to represent a number of different areas that are noted in the charter. Uh, we also looked at folks who have, you know, expertise or skills in various areas. Uh, implementing policies and practices to promote racial and ethnic, uh, equity, provision of services for people who've been experiencing homelessness. Uh. Experience of, of engaging in services, not just provision of. Uh, also folks looking at inner, from intersecting systems, so physical or behavioral health care. Uh. So we looked at kind of what are all of the different variety of experiences and, uh, just talent and passion that people are bringing. Uh, also looking at geographic representation. So, uh, these are the names of the selection committee recommendations for board nomination. We have T D White, Elizabeth McKeen Fitzgerald Mopin, Amaya Lenore, Victor Lu, Amy Thomas, Bella Irons, Jade Weiss, Christina Sawicki, and Tamara Bowman. Uh, our next steps is board, when we have quorum, affirming the nomination list. And then the C O C membership will be the ones to vote at the May 29th convening. Uh, voting will take place between 10:30 a.m. and 12:00 p.m. We have a little cushion of time that we've added so that if we need to be tallying votes in real time, we have a little bit of extra time to do so to ensure, um, all C O C members are able to vote. Um, this has been sent out as well, the voting timeline to C O C, um, R S V Ps for the convenings, so folks can ensure to be uh, online or at the convening physically to vote. Uh, we have currently prepped to do the in-person ballots as well as a virtual ballot. So we have both that will be reviewed, um, to ensure that we get everyone's, uh, everyone's voice heard. New.
Oh, so sorry.
New members will be welcome to, to attend the June meeting and officially begin as voting board members in July. Um, June will be intended to be onboarding for new members so that they are fully informed and prepared for the work to come in July. That's what I got for you. Um, questions, comments?
Do you want me just to come off mute?
First thing, go for it, Christina.
Um, how, what are we gonna do about accessibility of voting in the ballots?
In what regard?
In regards that, um, like someone like me might need help with like the print and filling it out and that kind of stuff, because I'm sure you're not gonna have the ability to have speech to text for me to be able to use it. So what accommodations are we gonna be ready to have in place?
Yep. Um, we will have different ones that will need for online and offline. We've asked every board, uh, every attendee for accommodation needs, so we'll be reaching out to folks individually to identify those needs.
In other words, will there be somebody there to help me fill out my applic, or my voting?
We make sure that that happens, yes.
Thank you.
You are very welcome, Christina. Welcome, Antoinette, welcome, Jaja. We do have a, oh, we do have quorum.
Your time is.
Good afternoon.
Bye.
Yes, Patricia.
I have, yeah. There are 10 nominees. What's my question? Just, how many, um, are we? You know, my tongue is tied right now. It's in there. How many, how many nominees? How many open seats? Thank you. Is that Tamara? Thank you. How many open seats?
Yes.
Out of the 10, all 10?
There are nine nominees, um, and nine open seats.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. You're correct, nine. Okay, and there's nine open seats.
Correct. I put it in your hands. You have quorum, um. I would need to make a motion.
Ruby, do you wanna lead the vote?
Well, um, did, we wanted, I wanted to make a motion to add names to the ballot.
Go ahead.
Um.
Start there.
Okay.
I'll, we can chair harder.
Yeah, I just make a motion that, uh, we add, uh, Lee is to express, uh, interest in re-nominating to the board. And if, uh, if Marvin wanted to, you nominated as well.
I second the vote. Okay.
Okay, well then I guess, uh, in the, in the motion of, uh, adding Lee's and Marvin to the ballot nominees, do we do a vote, a roll call, or?
Well, the next step would be discussion, uh, and then it would be, be a roll call vote.
Just that.
Okay, this is just for the vote of nominating Lee's and Marvin. Okay, I am going to go through. Please say yea or nay with your decision. Patricia, Sam.
So are we, and this, is this before the discussion or what? Uh, it's a yes. I do have.
Discussion's still open right now. If you have any discussion.
Yeah, I have a discussion. My discussion would be will they need to provide the question, the application, the information? Do, will that be available for us to read? A short.
Um. Kelsey, do you wanna take that one?
From a fairness standpoint, I do believe that having an application be important because the, the C O C members who will be the ones voting on nominees are provided with the applications of every single nominee. Um, so that they can be informed around that. So that is what my recommendation would be, uh, is that there are applications from them.
I agree. Um, and I do, going forward, excuse me, I just say yes to the nomination.
Handing it back to Alex, if there's no other discussion.
I think Lee's came off mute.
Okay, Lee's.
I was just gonna say, thank you. Um, I did send the, um, after I filled, oh, sorry, I'm realizing that this conversation hasn't been had as a, um, recorded session. It was only the practice session. Um, I applied, I was sent, um, confirmation. Um, but in reviewing, um, the other nominees, I realized that their applications were much lengthier than mine and I realized that the version that I, um, filled out was, um, a shortened version. It might have something to do with the time that I filled it out. Um, but yes, I was wanting to ask Kelsey if, um, that short application would be sufficient or if I should fill more out.
It, I sent you the, the full link, so if you would do that, that would be wonderful, Lee's.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, and thank you to Ruby for bringing this up as a nomination and I, it's a yay for me.
Awesome. And quickly, I do want to add that I'm on the King County, our, um, continuum of care website. And under last year, there is, under the C O C advisory community candidates, current board, the bio, Marvin's bio is there. And is it Lizzie? Am I pronouncing it right, Liv?
Lee.
There is short. Pardon me?
Lee's.
Lee's. There are, there is a short bio, some information there also as well. Just wanted to throw that in.
Thank you.
Are we going to the discussion?
Uh. I may make a recommendation that we get those applications from both Lee's and Marvin. I may make a recommendation that we get those applications from both Lee's and Marvin. Um, before the af- the final affirmation, as this would also put that list. Over the allowed nu- mem- number of members for the board. So the selection committee may need to go back and review. This is an extremely tight deadline. Um, and it makes me a little nervous that we will be able to fully get this done before the COC convening. While there was the link piece that I think is is very much valid to look at. Uh, I do think there was a a clear process for everyone who wanted to be a a new board member. Um, they went through a very rigorous review by the selection committee. Um, and want to just put that out there around. The fairness of this process, um, for all people who apply to be board members. Um, and wanting to ensure that it is, it is fair and it's transparent. Um, for everyone who wants to be a part of the board. Um, again, this would put that at eleven where there are only nine seats available. So wanting for you as a board to also consider that.
I guess, um, my question, my question would be, is uh, so the voting process, just for clarification, I know we're going close to time here. Um, just for clarification is then, because um my understanding would maybe be that we would then vote individually on the pe- on the, on the people that uh did apply? Or would that just be?
Each individual nominee is voted on. They need to have a sixty percent. Uh, of all votes to move forward to be a a board member. That's the threshold in the, per the charter.
Thank you. Um, so I don't really.
I just want to offer that sixty percent of the continual.
Vote, vote, voting mem- of people who vote at the convening.
Correct, sixty percent of that number, not necessarily six percent of the entire.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Because everybody's not going to be there. We limited it a bit.
Yeah, it's those who are present and who vote.
Okay.
Not sure where to go from here. Should we move forward on the voting of a nomination?
That will probably take place next Tuesday. The steps I heard were if Lee still wanted to return to the board. And I, we need to have applications uh submitted to the KCRHJ. I am figuring no later than Thursday or Friday of this week. Uh, and then scheduling a meeting Tuesday so we can vote on who is moving forward to uh. The ballot that the continuum will vote on next Friday. Did I miss anything?
I think that's all.
Yeah, the conven- the convening is on Wednesday.
Oh, I'm sorry. See, that's okay to correct me. My brain is in four different places at once.
Yeah, and I I do want to go back and review the charter just to ensure that. There's, there's nothing uncouth. I want to make sure that that this is a very clear and fair process. Um, yes, while you are the, are the board and are the ones to affirm, there is the selection committee portion. Um, so I I do want to do a little research and verification that adding nominees outside of the selection committee is an allowed action.
That's good. I agree.
I don't know if it's an allowed action. I know we used that action to add some folks the last time we asked new board members to join us. Or there was confusion around the process somewhat, not much.
There, I want to ensure that this is a fair, transparent process for everyone.
One for us to use moving forward.
Yeah. Yeah, what happened in the past is the past, we are moving in a different, in a direction that we are making sure is clear, fair, and transparent.
So always acknowledge where we've been so we can get to where we're going. I don't omit or overlook any of our work, uh, especially when we are improving what it is we do, not necessarily changing.
Do, just for clarification, do we need to vote on these, uh, you know, the the additional nominations, correct? Uh, so I make a motion to potential, to add the Ma- Marvin and uh Lee's name to the nomination. Potentially, I think Kelsey has to do the one backend thing, but I'd like to vote and see if we can put them on the nominations now so we can move forward.
Thanks, and uh, Alex, please help me if I'm wrong. We've already done the roll call vote, pleaded the roll call vote for that.
No, we have not.
Shall we do that with our last minute so we can let you guys go?
Yeah, I do also want to note that it it's uh. There is a conflict of interest on the board voting for your own nomination.
I would not.
There may need to be some abstention.
Okay, I I abstain, but yeah.
I could also abstain.
Okay. Alex?
Yep, uh, Patricia, Sam.
I'm gonna abstain for right now.
Tamara Baumann.
Hi.
What was that? You're muted.
Sorry, yes.
Kenyatta Carroll-Hillman. Lee, uh, Jaja Floyd.
I abstain.
Antoinette Lambert.
Agree.
Dorsal plants. Ruby Romero.
Uh, proof.
Martha Sasserosi. Christina Sawicki.
Yes.
Sherry Tillman. Um, we have. I don't think any, every member who is present voted, but we have four yeses and two abstains. It passes.
Four abstains.
Four abstains?
Marvin, Jaja, Lee's, Patricia, all abstain.
And I believe that uh, uh, Lee's and I simply recused ourselves from this vote. So you have four yeses, two abstains. Kelsey.
Four abstains. Four yeses. Yeah.
It still passes, I believe.
That motion gets passed. Motion is passed.
And again, I will review the charter, selection committee process, et cetera.
Yeah, did Austin get back to you guys on that nomination piece from his end?
No, he's not available.
Got it. Thank you.
Sorry, sorry for the extra work. Thanks, Kelsey.
Uh, we will do our best. Um, it's also, there is Mon- Monday is a holiday, so we will be closed. Um, and we have the convening on Wednesday. I will, I will do as much as I can.
I'm here to support. If you need support, Kelsey, let me know.
All right, we uh. Have to get going. Thank you.
You guys have a uh great rest of your day. And Tuesday, are we looking at two or are we looking at noon?
We'll need to do it offline um to do that.
Also, not an email.
Okay.
Also, also quickly, I do want to point out that on Tuesday, the day after Memorial Day, we have already pushed two things on the calendar. What do we have? Just to remind everybody, we have a three, isn't it something at um? Three PM and then four PM, CLC at three PM for hour, and we have four PM for the coordinated entry meeting.
Yeah.
Convening preparation, convening.
Convening preparation.
Yeah.
And you're so, are you asking or suggesting that we also add?
You, you guys, we really have to go. We have to be at an.
Okay, well, just want to clarify because it's rush. So we need, need to be.
Meeting and a four PM meeting. We can send, we will send reminders.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all.
Hi.
Thank you. Goodbye.